Good evening. We're ready to start our special meeting. It's a study session this evening. And I thank all of you and all the professionals that showed up here this evening and our staff. It looks like there's been a lot of work. We have a lot of artwork also that hopefully you can share along the way with all of us. And I thank all of you in the beginning here for attendance. You really are the ones that are going to help us carry this beautiful library project through fruition. And you're the ones that really care about this community. And I got to get more people out there that feel the way you do. So we're going to kind of have a lot of speakers tonight. And I'll limit you to two minutes. And if you're -- just understand my humor. If you're in opposition, you'll get one minute. But I'm just trying to lighten the load up here a little bit. I don't know legally I could do that. And if you'd like to fill out a card, you're more than welcome to fill out a speaker's card. And Suzie's already got the first one in, so she's ready to go. And so we're going to have -- we'll convene a study session. And we will have public comment, I guess, for nothing that's on the agenda this evening. Is that correct, team? And I guess we have a fan going somewhere up there. So now we will move on to item three of the agenda, the Half Moon Bay Library Project. So I believe, Alex, you've been pretty engaged in this process for a while. So we'll let you lead us off, please.
Great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Alex Kojikian, deputy city manager for the city. I'm just really excited tonight to present to you this new library project and bringing it forward. Over the past five months, since February 12th, when you guys gave city staff direction, it's been a great experience working with the San Mateo County Library staff, Group Four Architects, Gary Kitahata, and city staff as well, working for this project. And I would also want to thank the community, because the community really participated in this entire update process with their input. So tonight, this is a culmination of us going out there and really getting the input of the community of what they are envisioning for a new library. So tonight, I just want to go over the agenda. First, we're going to go with a quick project overview. We're going to then touch upon community needs, design opportunities, financing options, and then next steps. So starting with the project overview. So historical and current efforts. So what brings us to today? So I'll just go back about 10 years ago. The city went ahead and went for Proposition 14, grant funds, which was the Library Bond Act of 2000, for a new library. At the time, that library was to be 33,600 square feet in size. It came in second place or close runner-up before the bond funds ran out at the time, so we weren't able to get the new library at the time. So the next part of the history that we go to is back in 2013 or 2012 with the passage of Measure J by the Half Moon Bay voters, the half-cent sales tax, which gave the funding, actually, for us to be here tonight with the $500,000. And that's partly paying for this update process that we've been going through. And then the county went ahead and kicked in an additional half a million dollars to the city's efforts for a new library as well. I want to note at this time that with any new building, we are in a JPA agreement. And in there, it states that the county will pay half the cost for any new building that is built for the library. So I want to touch upon, council at their December 17th city council meeting urged to go ahead and discuss the library project. And that came forth on February 12th with the council giving direction to staff to move forward with an update process of the 2004 plans. They also wanted the library JPA and city staff to retain Group Four Architects to provide this library update. They also -- the council also stated that they wanted to have the new library be at the existing current library location, so built upon the same one-acre site. They wanted us to talk to the school district about shared parking use with Acuna Parking Lot. And we've done that as well as part of this process. Provide temporary library plan to the council so that when the current library is being constructed, we would have no loss in library usage. And we'll be going over that shortly. We established a technical advisory committee of city and library JPA staff and architects' staff to go through this update process. You guys also gave direction to establish a subcommittee of council members Qualcheck and Frasier to be part of this entire update process. And then you guys asked for the city staff to retain a financial advisor, which we have. It's Gary Kitahata right here to your guys' left with Kitahata and Company to go over financing options. And then the last thing was is that you guys wanted us to go through and give you guys the update. And then you guys would talk about possible ballot -- future ballot measures and funding So at this time, I want to go ahead and pass it off to our lovely Half Moon Bay branch, library branch manager, Annie Mallard.
Thank you, Alex. So first, I'm going to tell you a little bit about the day of the life of the Half Moon Bay Library. As you can see, the Half Moon Bay Library is a very well-used and very well-loved facility. 570 people visit the library. A thousand items are checked out. Staff answer over 50 questions. Eighty people attend programs. Thirty-plus children attend storytime. And every computer is used for more than seven hours. Though, there are rarely typical days at the Half Moon Bay Library. For example, during the past five days, we offered chair yoga, three days of literacy camp, free summer lunch, Lego club, didgeridoo's, reading tutoring, four storytimes, a magic show, crafts, live bees, fish painting, and a class on 3D printing. The previous numbers make a great case for why we need to replace the building. There is just not enough space for all that we do and all that we would like to do for the community. We have no programming space, so every event involves taking over the library. This morning, we had dinosaur storytime, and every dinosaur roar was heard throughout the library. Last Saturday, we had 160 people packed into the children's room watching a magician. Last night, we had so many concurrent activities and so little space that a student and her tutor had to bundle up and use the courtyard. We do not have enough space for the collections. We do not have enough computers. We do not have a teen space. We do not have any meeting space. And it is often a challenge to find quiet in the library. We have tried our best to efficiently use the current library, but the library is too small to serve the needs of our community. We had a wonderful time during the past three months, going out to the community and finding out what people wanted in a new library. We provided over 20 opportunities for the community to give input, values, opinions, and comments. During the first round, we asked the community to share with us their program needs, space needs, and design values. During round two, we had people vote on community material values, interior design values, site access options, and landscape options. During the third round, we incorporated the results of the two previous rounds and introduced design recommendations. We reached more than 2,000 people during this process. It was a huge success, and we believe we met with a true cross-section of our diverse community. We started each round with stakeholder meetings where we invited representatives from key agencies and communities. Stakeholders included city council representatives, a deputy county manager, representatives from Supervisor Horstley's office, Midcoast Community Council, Cabrillo Unified, Seacrest School, PTA and PTOs, Friends of the Library, Coastside Chamber of Commerce, Senior Coastiders, Coastside Mothers Club, Boys and Girls Club, Coastside Children's Programs, The Odd Fellows, as well as library patrons. Each round offered an open house and a community meeting in the library, followed by Saturday kiosks at the farmer's market, New Leaf Brazelberry, and the Mercado in front of Happy Taco. We also went out into the community to gather more input. We went to Senior Coastiders, Half Moon Bay High School, the Downtown Merchants, Youth Summit, Pescadero Elementary, Acuna's ELAC meeting, Kenyatta College ESL classes, literacy students and their tutors, and library events. We spent a great many weekends and evenings touring the community. And we really appreciate the support of city council, Friends of the Library, Group Four city staff, and library staff for being so generous with their time. The community chose themes and values that were used to design the final recommendation. And as you can see, some of the more popular themes, the children's space, people also wanted the space to be outside building to be warm and inviting, and they wanted the interior spaces to be comfortable and cozy. So now I'm going to pass the mic on to our deputy director, Tom Forton.
Thank you, Annie. I would like to begin by thanking Annie and the staff at the Half Moon Bay Library for their really amazingly incredible effort at outreach to the community, gathering ideas and input on the need for a new library, and all that a new library can offer to its patrons. The need identified in the outreach effort to the Coastside and Half Moon Bay communities shares basic elements of the customer service model that the San Mateo County Library provides in our larger, more modern libraries. For instance, in Foster City, Belmont, Milbrae, and San Carlos. Each of these libraries have large, flexible children's spaces, digital labs, comfortable people spaces for leisure reading, conference and meeting rooms, program rooms, and a large community room. Similar to the needs identified here in Half Moon Bay, but simply not accommodated by the small antiquated building. The San Mateo County Library service model focuses on the customer experience that allows patrons to discover popular materials by browsing attractively displayed books and DVDs, make a selection, and use a self-check station to quickly and easily borrow materials, a very traditional use of the public library. The model allows for this and the discovery of the evolving programmatic opportunities as highlighted in Annie's presentation. We're detailing the current library activity that really is quite amazing. Listening to community input, we vision a library with a large children's room, a dedicated teen space, quiet study areas, a literacy center, a homework center, digital studio, and a space to grow art collections. Working with Group Four, we have planned a flexible space that can evolve as community needs change over time. As I mentioned, the current 1971 building does not afford us the space or infrastructure to fully implement the San Mateo County Library service model. The 2002 Prop 14 grant set the library program at over 33,000 square feet. But current community outreach informs us that we can scale down to 25,000 square feet and still fully implement the San Mateo County Library service model by reducing the spaces, but not the service. In short, we can provide all the programmatic elements desired by the community in a thoughtfully and flexibly programmed conceptual library as developed with Group Four Architects. At this point, I would like to turn the discussion over to Don Merck's principal at the Group Four Architects.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. And with me also is Paul Jamcard, our lead designer and associate with Group Four. So directive from council was for us to update our 2004 grant application. It was rated outstanding. The need was significant back in 2003 and '04, and has only increased in the last 10 years. Our directive was update the needs assessment, the building program, as well as conceptual design. Am I loud enough here?
We want to ensure everyone can hear their presentation.
All right. And that's basically what we've been working on over the last four months of time. Along with the change in the community in the last 10 years, library services have also continued to evolve and significantly changed in the services and programs that they provide, really requiring this flexible space that Tom was talking about. And this is a change that we anticipate continuing to happen as library services, programs, materials, things continue to evolve with technology use as well. And so providing this flexible new library is really critical in this vision. As we look at the existing site, the library is to remain on as directed by council in February. It's a great location in the community, directly adjacent to the middle school, well-used by the students as well as the downtown merchants. That adjacency to Main Street creates a real opportunity to create a destination library and even bring more vitality and support to the downtown district. When we got started back in February, one of the critical things that we needed to update was the parking requirement. Just like libraries have changed over the last 10 years, based on planning, approach to smart growth, parking strategies have also evolved.
A couple of questions?
Louder, still.
I think we're trying to reduce the blower, and where our staff is working on -- excuse me for interrupting you.
Okay. Is this better now?
Are we making headway?
Yeah. Okay. All right. I will breathe right into the mic here.
Larry has a comment back there. Oh, you're working on it?
Okay.
Okay. You're welcome to come up and throw the switch, big guy.
Okay. So as we looked at the parking program, really critical next step in the construction document phase and updating the MND would be to do a specific traffic analysis and parking study for the site based on current today's best practices and the unique aspects of this location of the library. When we looked at a 25,000-square-foot program, we didn't want to use a placeholder for the parking program so that we kind of got prepared for the numbers that would be forthcoming in the future traffic analysis. We have two program options that we've looked at. The 25,000-square-foot program, which we would anticipate a parking need of around 70 parking spaces. And then also the 29,999-square-foot program option, where we would anticipate about 80 parking spaces being needed for that size of library. For the 25,000-square-foot option, we're able to provide 53 spaces on the immediate site. And then for the 30,000-square-foot option or 29,000-square-foot option, the footprint gets a little larger on the site, and the parking that we're able to provide on the site gets reduced, about 46 spaces on the site. Next slide. Additionally, council directed us to look at shared parking opportunities with the school district. And we have had multiple discussions with both administration and went to the school board to discuss the opportunity to provide a shared parking approach. In all discussions, the discussions were well-received, and it was considered a good idea. In all of the community discussions we had as well, a lot of positive, positive feedback came from community members looking at efficient use of taxpayers' dollars in the parking approach. This did not come to conclusion in terms of a shared parking agreement during this phase of the project, but with the detailed parking analysis done for the library project and potentially even sharing that and looking at using -- having the gym be part of that parking analysis as well as the skateboard park, there might be a nice opportunity to create kind of more of a parking district. So again, in the first phase of the next part of the project, we would propose that be one of the first steps that we look at.
This is the site plan that was developed with us, Group Four, Kikuchi Kankle Design Associates, the landscape architect from here in Half Moon Bay, and a lot of community input. We took the opportunity to restart this design process by revisiting where we were in 2004. 2004 had the entrance here located at the northeast site, a corner of the site. Pardon me. And we took the opportunity to kind of test the waters with another option of considering an entrance here adjacent to the parking. We characterized this as the parking or school-oriented option, whereas this one where we've arrived today was characterized more as the Main Street or community-centered option. That seemed to resonate more with the people we spoke with in the community, and it has lots of very practical, functional benefits for doing that. And so, starting with this large entry plaza here at the corner of Parisima and Correia's, we've worked with the landscape architect to create a nice, open space. It essentially is an extension of the lobby and creates a strong gesture connecting over to Main Street. People arriving, whether to the parking lot or to any of the convenient parking spaces along Correia's, have a covered walkway that brings them to the entrance. People have a drop-off that's directly in front of the front door, adjacent to some of the handicapped spaces that are directly in front of the door as well. Along the side street here, we've provided some short-term spaces to provide convenient access for people who are going to come in for just 10 minutes or so to get books from the holds that they've reserved or be able to just drop books off into the library circulation. Surrounding the site are other nice amenity spaces. The one over adjacent to the Acuna School is a smaller gathering space that's essentially dedicated to the teens and providing them a real space that they can kind of own and hang out. It's ideally located for what goes on there after school, waiting for people to pick them up and such. And then on the south side, protected from the winds that are coming from the ocean, but also exposed nicely to the warming sun, we've got a terrace space dedicated to the children's area that's just inside this small courtyard in the back. And then lastly, there's a small space dedicated to the staff. So there's a number of amenity spaces we managed to kind of fit into the site. Overall, the planting palette reflects the sentiment expressed by the community to create a coastal, natural variety of plants that echoes the natural landscape here in the Half Moon Bay. And it basically provides a wider range of different sort of amenity spaces that people were looking for in the site. Next.
As we go and look at the first floor of the building, what we've done is really pre-created all the active and the busy places on this first floor. In addition to the lobby, we have the new and popular collection, the technology, the teen space, a homework center, and then the children's area in addition to staff space. As we come into the lobby, and we can look at the perspective, you can see that the wayfinding is very straightforward with circulation to the second floor accessible by the stair as well as the elevator right in the front there. One of the things that got a lot of positive feedback, especially from the middle school and the high school kids, was some sort of refreshment station in the lobby. Having somewhere to refuel after school was seen as very important for the kids so they can get on with their homework. As you look down, you can see the new popular collection and the technology space from the lobby as well.
In addition, as people move in, we've positioned some of the important elements there. Like I mentioned before, the holds are immediately accessible from the front door in the lobby. The Friends Bookstore gets a terrific, high-profile location. They play such an important part of how the whole library continues to operate and its programming and things. The discovery area that has the popular collection is Don described, but also some very important group study areas. These, as you'll see as we go forward with the program, are fundamental to the evolving program for the library where people can get together for all sorts of things, whether it be for study sessions or starting a new business. We also have a small dose of the youth discovery area, provides a little bit of that collection available within this discovery area.
The information desk was ended -- kind of terminated that access from the lobby that you could see immediately when you come into the building. And then above that is the teen space. The teen space has great visible connection to the outdoors as well as a great connection to Acuna. Within the teen space, we actually have a study area as well as more of a social area. And the blue space that you see directly adjacent to it is actually a homework center that can be a flex space. It can open up either to the teen side or to the children's side.
That provides a terrific amenity to the children's area. Immediately to the south side of that is where we've got a fireplace that is -- opens out to the family space where parents can take their little kids and sit down in a big oversized chair and share a story. It's adjacent to the concentration of the collection that's spread out in more than ample areas, significantly bigger when things are today. As people move further south, it culminates in the children's discovery area. This is just an illustration of the kind of whimsical space we can create. This is -- we can go lots of different directions, and we look forward to the next phase of design where we can engage the community further to help develop a vision like this that fits really well with the way the many different programs are evolving for the library.
As we look at the second floor, one of the things that we've highlighted here is one of the service model advantages that this building has. So we do have what we call a flexible operational mode that we've designed for the building. And the spaces on the second floor that are shown in that peach-red color there are spaces that can be accessed after hours. We can secure off the lobby on the first floor, make access to the stairs and the elevator so people can get up to the second floor spaces and use them even when the library's closed. The spaces that they can access on the second floor are the large program meeting room, group study space, as well as the laboratory or maker space. Looking at the library lab, kind of a code word for tech space, maker space, high-tech, high-touch space, really flexible space. You could have Legos competition in the morning, composting in the afternoon, and 3D printing in the evening. Really designed to meet today's needs. And one of the spaces that the community really got excited about this is a view of that room looking back towards the program room. And the lovely views both the program room and the maker space are going to have towards the east and the coastal hills. Additionally, more -- or the large program room, that's fine, Pierre, thank you, is divisible into two. On the larger footprint, the building is about 20 -- or this room is about 2,500 square feet, can be divided in two, so two programs can happen at the same time. And during busy times in the library, very transparent wall, the walls can -- doors can open up, and it can be used as overflow study space as well.
Excuse me. The rest of the second floor is devoted to the adult collection, as you can see, all in green. It really has ample space for the collection and a diverse array of different kinds of seating spaces. One of the most desired types of spaces we heard from the community was that of a comfortable, quiet, cozy space. This image is at the very far west end of the axis coming in. And so the culmination of your journey into the library is this wonderful view to the west, to the sunset and the ocean. But it's a great quiet space even with an outdoor terrace. It provides sort of a buffer between the quiet study areas to the right and the larger collection to the left. As you turn left from this and you come further down, you have the collection, and there's also the literacy center here. And this area overlooks a green roof with such a top of that children's storytime area I showed you a moment ago. This is the massing of the building, reflecting both the current concept for that landscape design that we shared, but also the ideas of the building's articulation and expression of both of the materials and design values that were embraced and endorsed by so many people in the community. As you can see, some of the precedent projects that we introduced are showing up a little bit in the design. I think people will see a sense of what they were liking showing up in this building, whether it's the green walls, or the use of wood, or durable concrete, or stone materials, and a nice sort of open, transparent feeling for the building. The abundance of transparency is evident here on the east, facing the east coastal hills, as Don described, but also facing north, not only here on the north edge of the building, but also in the light monitor extending over to allow a lot of that natural daylight to come deep inside the building, providing an ideal kind of atmosphere for a reading and learning environment. In addition, the massing expresses opportunities to gain outdoor access. This is a terrace adjacent to the second story program room. And this plaza out front is embraced and protected by a nice trellis, which is an extension of the walkway. As we move inside the building, you'll see how it sort of steps down to the community scale except for the prominent civic presence of the community room itself. You get a sense of the different palette of materials, not just the stone, the glass, but also some of those living wall elements that resonated very much with the people who are looking at our design options. You'll see introduction of some elements that are intended to weather and reflect the kind of reality of the climate here, but they're well-selected and durable over time, so they keep maintenance to a minimum. As you can see here in this area, it's, as Don described, very clear to see where you're going. This information desk is a terrific culmination of that initial axis looking down, but then very easy once you get to that to know where the storytime's going to be, because I think parents are going to have their little ones running right ahead of them to get there. And that's the outside terrace for the children's area.
And don't forget the Friends in the lobby.
Oh, of course. We can't forget the Friends. As I pointed out in the floor plan there, front and center as people come inside, ever-present in the experience of people here at the library. So that living wall is both on the outside and the inside. Again, trying to capture one of those terrific opportunities that California affords us is that inside-outside experience. Here, you can see the transparency, that community room that could retract and open up. There's the library lab on the right, very flexible to open up to the rest of the space. Here's that library area at the end. So we envisioned people being able to just pull a chair out on a nice day. We've got that set back so that it's somewhat buffeted from the elements outside, a little bit of shade and coverage, so they can make use of that over time. One of the things that I should point out at this stage is that this is reflecting the 29,999-square-foot option. The means to accommodate the 25,000-square-foot option would be simply to remove this one bay of the construction and take this portion of the building and slide it over at 24 feet, allowing room for yet another bay of parking in the parking lot, but retaining all of the character and key features of the building as we've described it here. the character and key features of the building as we've described it here.
So moving forward, you know, what a beautiful design. But with that, there's a cost. So want to go over the cost with you today. The chart that you, the chart that you have before you this evening is the conceptual design project budget, and it includes the 25,000-square-foot library and the 29,900-square-foot library. All costs include escalations, so prices of what it would be to do construction in, of July 1st, 2016, that we're estimated for. With it, there's a breakdown too between what the city of Half Moon Bay has to pay, what the county of San Mateo has to pay, and furnishings and equipment of what the San Mateo County Library JPA would put forth. So on the 25,000-square-foot building, it's $22,821,000. And then on the 29,999 square-foot building, it's $25,946,000. So there's a difference of 3.125 million. With any new facility, and especially a bigger facility, there's an increase in cost for maintenance and utility costs of a new building. Some savings that we can get for utility costs at least is sustainable features of the building, so some green building techniques that could help reduce the cost. With that, I've put a list of a couple of the new updated libraries that are nearby. Of course, their climates might be different than that of Half Moon Bay, so that might play into the HVAC systems as well. You have, it runs from $200,000 all the way up to $350,000, depending on their unique natures and what they got going on. The current 7,835-square-foot building, our current maintenance, annual maintenance cost is $69,000. Now, I just want to make, to let you guys know that this is in perpetuity, of course, and that all costs would be the costs of the city. There's no share with the county on this because the city owns the building. All right. Furnishings and equipment funding policy. So being part of the San Mateo County Library JPA, within it, we, there are funds available for new library buildings, and that's trying to help promote new building of libraries. And with that, there is help for furnishings and equipment. Furnishings and equipment would include movable furniture, fixtures, technology, or other equipment that is not affixed to the, or permanently affixed to the building itself. Typically, the automated material handling system would be included, but service desks and shelving would not be included. Also, the council asked at their February 12th meeting to come up with temporary library plan when there is construction of the new building. And the project team went ahead and looked at a 3,000 to 5,000-square-foot facility would work, but we'd want it located in the downtown area. At the time, you know, there's a lot of timing issues, so maybe in the next year and a half, we don't know what type of vacant storefronts there might be, but that would be our first thing, is to look for a vacant commercial storefront. And if we had to, we could also look into modular buildings in the City Hall rear parking lot. With any of these buildings, we'd have to use this facility that we're currently in for storytimes or the bigger library events to program here in the Tadacaw Community Center. So at this time, the city went ahead and retained Kitahata and Company to go over the financial options to pay for this project. And with us tonight is Gary Kitahata, their principal. Gary, go ahead.
Thanks, Alex. So the city can borrow or finance its share of the library cost by borrowing money in many different ways. One of them is to issue municipal bonds, which are tax-exempt if you're using it for a public purpose, and therefore should be the lowest cost of borrowing. But before going straight to the type of bonds you would issue, there are really two factors to consider first. One is timing, when you actually need the money and how much you actually need. And the other is the source of the debt service payment. And there it breaks down to whether you're using an existing source...
We're getting another signal, we're just not hearing.
Oh, sorry. So whether you're using an existing source of city money or a new source of funding. So going first to the issue of timing, we're really talking about doing a financing two years from now. So I've used numbers here that represent the current market, but the market, actually a month from now, will be different from what it's going to be like, especially two years from now. So you have to take all these numbers with that consideration. But you really want to size the bond issue after you've received construction bids, because you don't want to borrow for any more than you actually have to. So generally, cities receive construction bids, decide on the lowest bid or the best bid, and then size their bond issue after that, so they have funds in hand before signing the construction bid and beginning construction. So the timing of the bond issue depends on the construction schedule. It also depends on the timing of other monies coming in. And we're assuming both the county and the library JPA monies are available upfront and in cash. But it's really advisable that you have a written, detailed plan with the county that guarantees that, because you don't want to be caught short with not having those funds. It might force you, in the worst case, to borrow it, to borrow even more. And then, we're assuming a city upfront contribution to try to reduce the debt amount. That upfront contribution has to be cash in hand. Fundraising contributions are great and valuable, but they have to be realized upfront to be able to size them into a bond issue. We can't use projections, because then, again, you could be caught short. And you have to have the funds in hand before you can sign the contract for construction. So then we get into sources of repayment. And the source of repayment for the debt will really determine the kind of bond issue you do. And the key distinction here is, again, using existing revenues versus developing new sources of revenue. And for example, a city general fund lease has to be budgeted from the general fund, but GO bonds are supported entirely from an override that's voted in, so that's an independent source of money. So I want to go more into this, because my primary recommendation is that you consider the use of GO bonds for this project. Now, I realize it requires a two-thirds public vote, but this is the kind of project that engenders the most public support at the ballot box. And GO bonds are both the lowest source, the lowest cost of financing of any kind of municipal bonds because of the strength of the credit. But it's also a new source of funding that's independent of the general fund, and so therefore protects the general fund against pressure in the future. My secondary recommendation is a general fund lease revenue bond. It's also called certificates of participation, or COPs. They're the same instrument. But I'm recommending that you extend the Measure J sales tax, which goes into the general fund for as long as possible, because, again, you need to make, use the general fund to make the lease payments. If you don't extend the sales tax revenues, then you don't have an external source of funding, and you have to rely upon the general fund for all the debt service. So this chart shows GO bonds versus general fund lease bonds. They're the same numbers that Alex had used, except that I'm netting out the $4 million of an upfront city contribution. If you look at the left-hand side, the net amount you would borrow for the larger scenario would be 8.2 million. And if you're borrowing 8.2 million net, GO bonds versus general fund lease, which is the bottom of the page, the bond issue size would be almost 8.5 million for GO bonds, but it would be over 10 million for general fund lease revenue bonds. The reason why is that for GO bonds, you don't need to have a debt service reserve fund. The credit structure is so strong, the rating agencies don't require you to have a reserve fund, so you don't have to borrow money for that. You also don't need to have capitalized interest, which is paying for the first two years' debt service. So you're borrowing less money. So the smaller the bond issue can be, the cheaper the debt service will be, which is actually shown by the next page. I apologize for the numbers being so small. If you just look at the two circled areas, the first column that's circled is gross debt service for a GO bond issue for the larger size, and it's about almost $600,000 a year. Gross debt service would be the same as net debt service for a GO bond. But on the right-hand side, for a lease revenue bond, gross and net would be different, because you've got capitalized interest for the first two years, you've got interest on the reserve fund netting out for the intervening years, and then at the last year, your reserve fund kicks in and pays for the last year's debt service. But the annual debt service is about 20% higher, because you're borrowing more money and the interest rates are higher with lease revenue bonds, because your credit rating is lower, usually a notch lower. The highest credit ratings are for GO bonds. So this shows the impact of, the way the GO bonds are paid is by an override to the 1% or, the 1% Prop 13 tax levy. And if it were the smaller, the middle column for the smaller size, you'd be adding basically 2.1 cents to a $1, 1% or $1 per $100 AV. People usually express it by tax levy per 100,000 AV, so that would be $21. I put the average home price, I think, in Half Moon Bay of $700,000. The actual levy that would be on your assessed value, not on the sales price. So if people have owned their home for a while, they'd have a lower assessed value, the levy would be different for them. So lease revenue bonds are technically not debt under state law, so you don't need to have voter approval. But you do need, again, capitalized interest and a reserve fund, and you need to budget every year to pay debt service. So that's why I've recommended that you extend the Measure J sales tax as long as possible. That would require a majority approval if it's a general increase. If you restrict the use of the money specifically to pay debt service, then it becomes a two-thirds vote. But if you just make it a general increase, it's your discretion to budget the money. Hopefully, you will budget it for debt service, but it's your choice. So I've got two scenarios here. If you had a 10-year debt term, but you only extended Measure J for seven years, again, sorry for the numbers being so small, the small number that's circled on the right is the net debt service total for this scenario, which would be, so the exposure to the general fund would be $3.4 million over the 10-year period. The other years are covered by the prop J money, the Measure J money, capitalized interest, the reserve fund, et cetera. This is for the larger scenario, and then the next page shows the smaller size, and the total debt service number, net debt service is 1.6 million. It's, this is the total exposure to the general fund, and again, it's because you're borrowing less money for a smaller size. So at this point, the financing issues discussion will be continued by Scott Williams, the City Finance Director.
Thank you, Gary. Mayor, council, I'd like to build on what's already been presented here. And I'd like to present you with funding scenarios, and specifically how these scenarios presented in the tables in the staff report that are recommended today interface and impact our future budgets. Three, and I'll walk you through the tables, but three scenarios are going to be presented, but for each one, there are, the following assumptions apply for each one. And this applies for any financing structure we decide. And that is, the first is that the city will provide $4 million for the city's total share toward the project, leaving 6.6 million to be financed. So sources of this are unassigned fund balance, savings from contract services, contingencies not used, as well as Measure J. If Measure J is extended, the, we used what was labeled the best option with an expectation of 1.4 million specifically from Measure J per year to add to this. Projections for future years that you're already aware of reflect relatively, well, they reflect a reduced general fund transfer to capital projects. And also, they reflect relatively flat wages, and of course, a key date for us, 2019, the future, the full defecence of the judgment obligation bonds. So for the financing options, I'm going to walk you through the tables that were provided, and we'll take a look at the six-year, 10-year, and 20-year option. So the first one presented here is a six-year option, and there's three key components that follow in each table presented today. There's the total debt service, which is based on duration as well as interest rate. There is debt service funding from sales tax, and finally, the general fund available for each of them. So the first, the first column there is what happens if Measure J does not pass in November? We have a shortfall of $750,000 if we go with this option. That's per year. If Measure J is extended through 2019, the three-year option, we have 1.2 million provided from sales tax, but we still have a shortfall. It's pretty tight. If Measure J is extended five years, it's looking a little better. We will have 4 million available for debt service, and we're looking at a million projected surplus or budget to work with. Next, we have the 10-year option.
May I ask a question? Or you want me to hold that to the end? Can you go back one slide, please? So, and the sales tax column, obviously, that's not sales tax, that's revenue, but the 1.2 million, is this a six-year contribution or a one-year contribution?
It's the...
The cumulative over six years?
It's, if we go, if it's extended for three years, there are already some assigned revenues for Measure J.
You went through, at the meeting, we were talking about Measure J. You went through a method of allocating this upcoming Measure J for different projects. 1.2 was set aside for the library, money was set aside for streets, and I think a few other projects were also included.
Okay, understood. And we did that saying, I'll let you continue, but my comment is, we did that saying, oh, we think 1.2, based on our judgment from this table, is the right number for the library. We didn't have analysis saying what we needed for the library, but thank you.
Okay. Okay. So for the 10-year option, if Measure J does not pass, we're at about zero, and it's because of reduced debt service, that's why it's not negative. If it does pass, if it's extended for three years, 1.2 million, same amount available, and now we're looking at a little bit, little bit firmer budget in this scenario. If Measure J is extended five years to 2021, now we have potentially 4 million available, and we're back up pretty close to projected, where our future projected budgets are. And for this scenario, we've added the seven-year option to just show what it looks like based on best estimates, and I went very conservative on those numbers, and this is, this is what it would look like in the long term. Finally, 20-year option. You notice the debt, total debt service changes significantly because of the duration of the note. And the debt service each year is reduced, so we actually have a little bit left over if Measure J did not pass, but you have a significant more debt. If it passes, we're looking at pretty close to what we're already, what we are already projecting in future years, based on number of assumptions discussed. Five-year follows the same pattern, it's looking better. 1.8, 1.8. And the 1.1, you notice the footnotes, that's, we're so far out at that point, it's just, okay, this is about what we're looking at. So those are the, those are the options in terms of shorter, shorter financing. Staff, in our recommendations, we need to be mindful of the assumptions that are built into every one of these options. So first of all, we have had firm sales and transient occupancy taxes. Cities enjoyed that. It's, it's, it has really been a terrific few years. But if there is a deceleration in the economy, it could prove challenging to other capital And another thing to think about long-term, there will be increased expenditures. We've been in a very flat inflationary cycle. That's not going to last forever. It's just simply not. So looking at these scenarios, staff recommends the 10-year funding option as a... So looking at these scenarios, staff recommends the 10-year funding option as it provides, of the three, as it provides a 30% savings in debt service over the longer-term financing, yet it's long enough that it allows for a buffer if any of the previously expressed concerns come to pass. So finally, we want to leave you with this. We have options. We have numerous options between what we've presented and what Gary has presented. There is no doubt about it, if a GO bond, if we're able to surmount the challenges of a GO bond passing, that provides a maximum flexibility to the general fund, and we wouldn't be looking at extending Measure J. But if we are able to extend Measure J, we're saying that we can get this done. So at this point, we're leaving it with, there are a number of options available to you to complete this project.
Thank you, Scott. So moving on forward, one of the other items back at the February City Council meeting was, City Council wanted us to go ahead and look at just what grants are out there and what type of grant funding there is. So we looked at a couple of things. We made contact with the County of San Mateo's Finance Department, and there are grant experts over there, and there are no library grants currently out there. There are no current state grants for libraries out there as well. There's possibilities for just different portions of construction, the sustainability that we were talking about, like the green roof or permeable pavers, you know, where water can go through for the stormwater mitigation stuff. You can use Prop 84 grants. We could be eligible for that as part of this. The other thing City staff has done is, we have reached out to a community foundation, looking at low-interest loans out there or other grant funding out there. The other item is that fundraising. We're going to need to partner with the Friends of the Hafn Bay Library to really do a robust fundraising campaign, hopefully over the next year and a half, leading up to this So just with the financing items that both Gary and Scott talked about, we talked about new revenue sources, and with that, there's ballot opportunities for these financing measures. So I just want to quickly go over those real quick with you. For general sales tax measures, they, any ballot measure for general sales tax needs to be held during a regularly scheduled governing body election, so like a city council election, which happens even years in November. And you could do the general sales tax, which is the 50-plus-one simple majority, or if you're doing it just for the library, then you're looking at the two-thirds majority. The other item is for the GO bonds, a special use tax bond measure. If you're just going to do it at a regular election, you could do it both, you could do it in March, June, or November, and it would take a two-thirds majority for passage. The other option for a GO bond measure is a melon ballot election, and that special election, there is certain parameters to that. They can be held the first Tuesday after, the first Monday in May, the first Tuesday after the first Monday of March of even-numbered years, or you can do the last Tuesday of August of each year. So the cost for just a regular general sales tax ballot measure for November is $15,000. A melon ballot election would be $58,000, and a special election for the March, June, or November elections that aren't going with a regular cycle, those are at $108,000. So the project timeline, so where we're at today, so there are four phases that we're looking at right now. We've just, it's kind of nice to be completing the conceptual design, so the first phase of the project, and what we would be doing is going off of, the next phase would be the finance plan, so really figuring out what methodology or what direction we're going in with that. Once we have our finance funding in place and the plan in place, and it could be dependent on a November election, then we can move into the construction, document, and bidding phase. That's about, it takes about a year, and then we would be awarding a construction contract in early 2016 with the hopes of starting construction July 1, 2016. So next steps. So what I'd like to, the direction that I'd like to get from the City Council tonight is what library size you guys would like? A 25,000-square-foot facility or a 29,999-square-foot facility? I'd like direction on that, and I'd also like direction on your financing option that you would like City staff to pursue. We would then, from your direction that you've given to us, we still are partnering with the County of San Mateo, so we have other project partners, like the County Board of Supervisors, who we'd have to be in talks with and possibly present to, as well as meeting with Library JPA, their board. And then we'd also be in talks with the County Manager's Office as part of that. We'd also have to work on a mitigated negative declaration, which updates the parking and traffic studies and analysis. And then, once we have the funding in place, we would then go through an RFP process to get to the construction design phase. And lastly, fundraising, 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 partnering up with the Friends of the Hafn Bay Library and seeing how we can fundraise to offset the overall project costs. So with this, I just want to first thank the County Library staff, Group Four, Gary Kitahata, for helping us out and making a great technical advisory committee and a project team. And this concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very nice. Thank you. And I think, again, we have a lot of public here, and I want to give you the opportunity to continue to share your feelings with us, and I know we asked you to fill out cards, and we can make sure you turn in a card later, I guess, City Clerk, Deputy City Clerk, are we okay for that? But the main thing is, we, I think, as this group has done, everyone has really worked hard at community outreach. We always get comments about transparency and all those types of things. Well, we have definitely, in this library thing, as we have with everything, we're giving everyone a chance to speak up. And so this is an opportunity, maybe we'll hear them first, and then we'll bring it back to the Council to ask questions. I would thank you for your thorough, thorough presentation tonight, all of you. It was about as complete as we could get. So why don't we have people come forward and give you a couple of minutes to share your feelings on this? And I did have first card here turned in, Suzy, so you're welcome to come forward and push the little green button and make your comments, please. And then we'll ask other people. Jim Marsh is next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon, Council members. First of all, I want to congratulate the library on having the absolute best drill team in the Fourth of July parade. They do a great job every year. The other thing I think ought to be mentioned is that you really have done an excellent job in presenting this both to the public and to the City Council, I think. I think it's one of the things that shows how well everybody's worked together and really done due diligence and really looked for answers where it could be a really hard, hard project to get through. And the only thing I would want to say is do not go small. In 10, 15 years, we don't want to be saying, how can we expand the library? Because those of us who read mysteries need more. So please, think of the 30,001 as a really good investment, and we'll find the money somewhere. I mean, fundraising is something this town knows how to do, and I'm going to help. So I think that that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jim Marsh, please, and anyone else then may follow.
Yes, hello, thank you. I'd certainly ask for your support for the library. I know that it's been a topic of conversation here in town for some time. Just a couple of quick comments. I think we've actually, you know, won the lottery with the Group Four participation. I mean, they've done a marvelous job, you know, last time, and certainly all the displays and the work you've seen now has been really top-notch, and it looks like a place you want to go. Looks like a place you want to go and, you know, settle down and maybe read a good book, maybe see something that you haven't seen before. Basically, the two other issues that I might want to bring up, one is funding and the other is parking. Parking, get as much of it as you can. You can only do it now, and like the lady said just a minute ago, the more is better on the parking. It also gives you a larger building. There are a few of us around that are still sort of looking for underground parking, but that's probably not in the books. Thank you very much. And the other is, in terms of the funding for this, try and extrapolate out what your costs are. Do it the least expensive way that you can. Remember, it's overhead, and if you can, please get a clause in there that says you can pay the principal down early. Thank you very much. Thanks for the support.
Thank you. And it looks like we have a mom with a hipper back there with the one on the hip. Come on up, mom. It looks like you've got plenty of projects. I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but you're more than welcome to come forward, and don't worry about a few little comments from your young guy there. We're used to that in life.
I so appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Come on up.
He's a veteran of public meetings.
We're going to put you in charge of fundraising. You like to talk so much.
So my name is Deborah Hurst. I'm a Moss Beach resident and a member of the Coastide Moms Club, and I just wanted to say we're so excited about the prospect of a new library, the county's support, the city's support. We would love to be involved more, but as you can see, our hands are full a lot of the time. But we greatly appreciate all the thought that's going into it, and I agree with the comments, oh, no! But I heard a fraction of, about someone saying, don't go small. It's our opportunity to dream big for our future, for our family, for all the public that benefits from this resource. So I just wanted to lend my support to your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a saying that, you know, you want to get something done, you always have to ask the busiest people.
So true.
And that's part of our coastside motto out here, really, look at the busiest people. They're all stepping up to serve and help, so you're all there. So don't worry, we'll get you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we want to make sure it's built before that guy's off to college, too.
Yeah, I hear you. Well, we're here to help in any way we can. We'll just do it in short bursts.
Thank you. Come forward, anyone else? Friends of the library, would you like to step up and share some of your feelings, please?
Yes, thank you. Some Hope Atmore, I'm co-president with Julie Mal of the Friends of the Library, and I just also want to say how excited we are to be at this phase. It seems like quite a while ago when we were up here talking, and even two years ago, I think, that I brought my son, and he was sitting next to the podium. So we are really excited, and it's been amazing getting all the feedback from the community. We've had volunteers out there with Group Four at almost every event, and the response has been incredible. And, I mean, I think this is a pretty good showing for a City Council meeting, but as far as the number of people that actually came out and talked to us about what they want to see, it was absolutely fantastic. So we know that the entire community is behind this all the way across, you know, up the coast. At this point, I don't want to speak on behalf of the Friends as far as which direction to go on size or financing. On a personal note, I do hope that we can do it in the fastest way possible and also the least expensive way possible. I would hate to see us in a position where we're hoping and crossing our fingers for something to pass, only to find out that it won't, and then we're stuck. So I want to make sure that that's taken in consideration. And then, on behalf of the Friends, though, I will say that we are absolutely ready and poised to go out and start the fundraising process and to get as much money as possible from those deeper pockets on the coast, rather than having it come out of the taxpayers. So that's all. Thank you so much for doing this. We appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? We have time, otherwise, yes, sir. Come on up to the mic.
Peripheral neuropathy and old age. I'll get there. I didn't fill out a card, and I've just got a couple of brief comments. Well, the first one is, I've been abhorred that the city has gone into the business of the multi-story buildings. But in the case of the library, I don't know what the alternative is, and I think people are happy with the site, and so I guess I've got to say yes to that. But I think you guys know about some of the recent skyscrapers that have come into town, and I just wish they weren't there. Two issues. This has, this library has a lot of facing-south windows, and that's great. There'll be a lot of light. One of the very important things to do is to get an efficient way of closing them off during, you know, really, those happy days when we get all the sun we want, and it's a tricky thing to do. I worked for the College of San Mateo for a number of years, and they were sold on a system similar to these hanging blinds over here, except they were much higher because they covered whole classrooms. Well, those all fell apart. They had a lot of maintenance problems with them, and it was a real problem. So that's an issue that may need to be looked at very carefully, because you want that view, you want that light as much as you can, but you've got to have some kind of way of controlling it. I believe, if I understand right, a few years ago, they came out with a special kind of glass will actually change its, a light filter, whatever you want to use the term to let light through, depending on how strong the window's hitting it. So that's even a possibility. And my other comment relates to elevators. I would not design the library to have big-use elevators. We need the exercise. I need the exercise. More stairs are good, but there are some people with wheelchairs that would need a smaller elevator with key control or something librarians could do. But I think just to have people, especially kids, riding up and down, and I'm sure the older people need the exercise. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Laura Wilson. I volunteer with the Friends of the Library, and it's just been so exciting to see this come together with such a forward-looking plan. Just in the near term, the library is such an important part of the community, but the technology elements and the Makers Lab and the, beyond the literacy programs that we do now, really investing in the community, not only for our quality of life together day-to-day, but investing in people's lives going forward. I think it's a tremendous asset, and I'm excited to see the conversation progressing. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Questions from the audience? Well, we can come back to it, if we want to, but we can bring it back to Council for some further discussion, and then if there's something that comes to mind, then you're more than willing to, welcome to come forward again. So I know we have a lot of artwork here, as the Vice Mayor was just showing me, so we definitely know. Go ahead and comment, Vice Mayor.
Well, we have, this is great. There's lots of artwork and pictures from children, as well as about, I think, 30 different emails of support. But I think it's important to say, too, up and through Fourth of July, Dawn and I were out at the kiosk during the parade. At that point, we've had response from 2,000 people on the coast that have input on how to build and what, how to build this library, what aspects they wanted. And as we've got artwork from kids, I think one of the most valuable things that we did get was so much input from youth. I think that was, that was very rewarding for me to see. They definitely had interest in this, and this is a big part of it, because as you know, the county has a program now called the Big Lift, and it's so critical that children should be able to read by the time they're in third grade, because there is proof, and that is going back to people who are incarcerated or are down on their luck. They didn't learn how to read properly by the time they were in third grade, and that carried with them throughout all their life. So as much as we like a library to do so much for us, libraries that we grew up with are so different now. There's so many programming, as Annie had mentioned, some of the things that go on. It's, it's not a place just to warehouse books. So if you're thinking this is very expensive, it's not just a place that has shelves of books. It's become a learning and a technology center, and really a place, too, where people who are changing careers can invest time and energy, as well as we have laptops and we have different technologies. Sometimes we are fortunate to have our companies we work for pay for those, but the majority of people do not have access to that, nor the cost of the internet. Look at what you pay to get internet and cable TV. A lot of people can get that now from their libraries, and that's where they're going to. So it's something to keep in mind when we talk about the cost of this, because it is a great deal of money. But what is important to know is libraries have evolved to so, so much more, and they can be a key part of the community for learning.
Thank you, and I believe sometime you could share with us your travels of visiting libraries, once we figure out what's going on here. So Councilmember Patrick?
I'm the shortest one, and I have to stand up. No, because it pulls theirs. Okay. So, oh, pull, okay. I guess, I guess my concern is more about money, as it always is. We're talking about Measure J and also GO bonds and other financing. So the great thing about Measure J is that it's not the residents that are really paying the Measure J money, it's coming from the people that are visiting. the Measure J money. It's coming from the people that are visiting us, which is really great. But is there a way to do the combination of Measure J and GEO bonds just in case Measure J does not, you know? Because I think we promised the community that we would do Measure J, but only like in three-year steps. And I think we need to make sure that we keep our word to the community and the residents, that it would be in stages of three years. So I know we would like to see it go five and seven, but I think the best way to do that is to continue to extend Measure J. And I think once the residents see that we are using the money the way we say and that we have an oversight committee watching the money. So I think we have gained the trust of the public on that. So I don't see us not getting Measure J passed. But I would like to see a combination of Measure J and GEO just to make sure we have the money. So I don't know how we do that.
Thank you. Interim city manager Stuart, would you like to comment now a little bit on the financing? Or would you like a couple more council members to make their comments?
I can respond to.
All right, go ahead and respond to Naomi, please.
The recommendation would probably would be to wait, you know, have measured, see what happens with Measure J in November. If we go with a 25,000-square-foot building and Measure J passes in November, we would be able to afford the library. There may be some reduction in some other projects that we would do later on, at which point we can bring those projects back to the community and have them make the decision whether or not another sales tax extension would be appropriate for those projects. If Measure J does not pass in November and the community would like to have a library, what we would recommend is doing an election, probably something like a mail-in ballot in the spring of 2015. So we wait to see what the results of the 2014 November election are for Measure J to make any further decision on how we would fund the library.
So through the chair, question on Measure J. If you're talking about the 25,000 square foot, what if it's the 30? I know, that's pretty hard.
Right. I mean, the 30,000 square-foot building, as the numbers show, make it a, really do have, if Measure J passes, you know, and we do a 10-year, we might want to look at extending the financing maybe a little bit beyond the 10 years, maybe doing a 15-year one to have it fit better with our cash flow. We'd have to look at that. The other way to, the other thing to look at is if you're interested in us reviewing sales tax and a portion coming out of a GEO, we can look at what the combination is. The other question that's still outstanding is how much money is going to be raised? And we can't count on that upfront. But what we can do is create refinancing, or financing methods where as we get contributions in and donations in, that we can pay off some of the debt. So we can, it's one of these moving pieces, unfortunately.
Yeah, so it's a moving target. Okay, thank you.
I'll get to it. Just with respect to the size and with respect to one of the first commenters about the future, just for discussion purposes, we're fairly limited on growth in the housing world of 1%. I believe in the city limits of Half Moon Bay. And then the county restrictions are getting tougher and tougher for unincorporated. So I just, you know, it's just worth thinking about a little bit. How much growth do we anticipate in the future? If we look at Highway One, it looks like growth is here right now because it's packed all day long, which you all know because you're trying to get on it or cross it or whatever. South Coast, I think, again, I always comment to friends and visitors that we really are limited on water. You know, I just, I'm afraid that we're not going to get to see much growth south because there's just no water availability unless there's some drastic changes. So these are just some just discussion points that I want to put out there regarding the size. I have not come to a conclusion. But I'll go to past mayor Qualcheck.
Thank you. So I want to thank Alex among all the staff who have done a great job and all of our support for this project. Among all the greatness, Alex's work really stands out and rises even above that. Every time I've talked to him about the library project, he's always had a main path and a Plan B path and always ever-forward, just digging out options, digging out different approaches. And I can't thank you enough, so I want to say that publicly. But I also want to thank all the contributions from some staff, from group four, from our financial advisors, the Friends, of course, all the tireless work and input and passion to Marina, my co-partner in this endeavor. I don't want to say that word. And I just really, I'm excited about this. And I was just thinking to myself, this isn't bad for a city that was going to go bankrupt four years ago. There's a bigger story here that I won't go into. I'll say just one thing, that we've really led an effort with our community and our support to have a really significant turnaround. And I thank Marina for saying, "We've got to get traction on this project." And it is the most important thing from a community project in my eyes, that we have to do this, and we have to keep pushing, and we can't stop. We can't delay. What, if we pause, reevaluate, start rethink, it's five, 10 more years. And this community needs this facility now. We have 2,000 people giving input. And I've had one person say, "Gosh, I really hate change. I really hate change. I really hate change, but I've got to support this because we need it." At one of the community sharing sessions shared with me. So I am enthusiastic about the new library. And if I can say, other children here, come hell or high water, I want to see it happen. So I have a couple of questions I want to bring up. So in terms, I guess a comment, in terms of Measure J or a bond, the analysis was sound. I appreciate the financial analysis. Missed one, I guess the point Naomi made, which is who pays for Measure J? Who pays for a bond? If it's a tax on every parcel of $175, that you have to have a 2/3 majority, that is a different thing to look at than a half-cent sales tax for three years that would help fund the lease. So the reason why, even though on the surface level, the dollars are higher for using Measure J funds and a Measure J extension, sorry, I'll speak up. I see the international signal for I can't hear. The reason why I'm going to support, strongly support using Measure J funds and extension of Measure J for the new library is because it disperses the money across the whole community and those who visit our community. It is the only way for people who visit Half Moon Bay and that people love Half Moon Bay. They come here, they spend their resources here, and we want them to leave their resources here so we can have a new library. And it is the only way they can contribute. It actually, in my opinion, would reduce the burden to individual citizens of the community. I think that's the main reason why I would support that. Second reason why I would support it is in 2019. Again, some of our hard work to turn around this city has led to this great event in 2019 when our bonds are paid off, and we will have additional revenue. Which means from that point, with no additional increase cost to our citizens, we'll be able to have a library. It is taking those funds from Measure J that are contributed to from visitors and those funds from paying off the bonds early with no other increase to our community, we would get a library. And I think that is unheard of. It is just unprecedented to have that kind of financial strength to build a new library with such a little impact financially to the citizens. I think that's awesome, and that's the direction I'm going to support. As to the $1.2 million for Measure J allocated, that, there could be 1.3. There could be 1.4. We came up with a 1.2 based on a basket of projects we were trying to prioritize. And we could look at that again. And I would, I'm comfortable to de-prioritize other projects to reprioritize this project. I have no problem with that whatsoever. So with that, my questions, like every time I have a question, I come up with a comment.
You're not on the two-minute limit yet.
Yeah, good, good. So there was, for furnishings, furnishings includes computers, tables, bookshelves, all those sorts of things. Does our agreement with the county include cost sharing for furnishings?
The furnishings is strictly through the JPA. No cost sharing.
Thank you. And, let's see. And I caught a math error. I'll tell you later. And then the other thing, if we could pull up any slide that shows the total interior view of the library, either floor, I want to talk about the given takes of 25 versus 29. Is that like a marketing thing, 29999? I want to talk about the given takes of the 25,000 versus the 30,000 square-foot facility. Because I understand, you know, the staff report was excellent, by the way. And we hear that the, you know, all programmatic needs will be met. And so as I'm looking at this, and even though all programmatic needs will be met, if you remove an entire bay, what's the practical reality we're going to experience within the library if we go with a smaller footprint?
Some of the practical realities would be mostly just scaling all the sizes incrementally smaller so that we arrive at the figure. One impact that I can speak to directly would be the size of the community room. I think at the 30,000 square foot or 29999, it's at 2,500 square feet. In the 25,000 square-foot conceptual design, it's imagined at approximately 2,000 square feet. Similarly, I think the spaces for the teen area were defined differently. If you can see in the plan that's on the screen right now, there's a separate teen space that's towards the corner. And then in the 25,000 square-foot plan, we have the teen room and the collections, but not that separate space in the corner. So those are just a couple of examples. But then throughout the entire plan, we would scale things back. But we would include all the programming needs and all the services of the library's customer service model in the 25,000 square-foot plan.
Got it. Thank you. And so Alex, I'll ask for your direction, who can best answer this question? We will have parking needs for a 25,000-square-foot library, and we will have parking needs for a 30,000-square-foot library. And a major factor in how I decide what I'm going to support is our ability to accommodate parking in a risk-free way. Meaning, I'm less interested in a potential solution that might work, and I'm much more interested in a secured solution that is going to guarantee the future of this project. So can you please comment on parking for either situation? What is certain and what is not certain?
Okay, so parking with a 30,000-square-foot building, currently it's asking for 80 spaces of parking, and that's based on the square footage. So when you see a reduction of 5,000 square feet, that's a reduction of 10 spaces that we currently have. The other thing that you have with a 25,000-square-foot model is that you get an extra bay of parking. So you reduce the parking requirements of 10 spaces, plus you gain an additional seven spaces. And so it makes it more viable for parking on its own, standalone, including on-street parking as well. We didn't even add that to the mix. The other thing is that even if we go with either-sized building, council member Qualcheck, we still would want to partner with a school district with a shared parking option possibly for the future. And that would benefit the school, and it would benefit the city as a whole. And the public really likes the idea.
Great, thank you. And I like the idea as well. There's been, as a, we really have such a big audience. We've done some great collaboration, right, with the Boys and Girls Club, with the school districts, so that collaboration thing is really strong. Go back to the previous slide you showed, hopefully my final question. So in this slide, just indicate, we, on the left, we have 53 spaces and required 70. On the right, we have 46 spaces and require 80. Is that correct? So in both cases, there's a shortfall?
That is correct, but there's a greater shortfall in the bigger.
So it's more worser for the bigger one? Okay.
Basically, yes, sir.
I need to go library, yeah? Okay. Okay, so what I'm seeing is that neither solution is a slam-dunk parking situation.
It's not slam-dunk, but the other thing that we have to understand is that there still is a parking study or a traffic study that has to be implemented here, an update to the mitigated negative declaration that will really give us what we're looking at, especially with a gym facility that could become an escape park as well. So that's all going to play into this whole general vicinity for parking.
Okay.
Does that, sir?
Does it? Yes, it does. Yeah, I have what I need. And I'll just say that my gut says and my intuition says that the bigger facility is better for our community. I also, you know, participated in some of the community information sessions. And I did hear from a couple folks, two folks, saying that they were concerned about the size, but I heard overwhelmingly from people who wanted this larger facility. And that's where I'm leaning. But my perspective is it is choosing between two great options because, again, where we were just four years ago, this is a great spot to be. So those are all my comments and questions.
Mr. Mayor. Through the mayor, I have a quick comment, if it's okay with you. The one comment that I want to make sure that it still is, you know, on your guys' windshield is that we still have about $200,000 to $300,000 of maintenance and utility costs in perpetuity with a new building. So I just want you guys to really think about that as you're going through your financing options as well. We don't have that at this time.
Councilman Alafon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start off by saying, after listening to everything, and I haven't been as involved as some of the other council members have been, but having heard everything tonight, I have to tell you, I think it makes sense to go with a larger facility. The cost of about $1.4 million to pick up, I guess that's about, what, 20% more in size? I think we'd be foolish not to find a way to make it happen and have something that's definitely going to last us a long time. And 5,000 feet is a lot of square footage. It's almost the size of our library now. So I very much am in favor of the larger library. I understand the implications with parking and with financing. But when Rick and I first came on the council, everything was, think small. Find ways to reduce. Find ways to cut back. And I think now, our council now needs to be in a mode of, and I don't mean this in a negative way, but I think there has to be a little bit of a feeling of risk-taking, of stretching ourselves and doing things for the future of our community that we probably wouldn't have thought of four or five years ago. Quick question. Was there, did I hear there was like coffee or food service downstairs?
We provided space for that.
Okay, I think that's important. If you want to get people in a library and enjoy it, kids, adults, they're hungry, they want to drink, they want coffee, that's a perfect place to have it. So again, I'm in favor of a larger facility. And the third thing, too, is we've seen our community fail five times with a school bond measure. And the sixth time, they were successful. Not only were they successful, I think they hit like almost 70%. And then they passed another, what, $81 million, I think it was a bond issue. Then they redid the parcel tax. So the community is saying to us, they're in favor of things that help schools, help students. And to me, a new library fits in exactly with that same concept. If you want to improve kids' education, the mention of three-years-old reading, this all fits together. Financing, I agree with Naomi. Keep Measure J at three years. It was a commitment we made. I think it still makes sense. My feeling is we need to move forward. We'll find a way to make the financing happen. And I'm always impressed with all the great direction we get from our finance people, and especially from interim city manager Stuart. There's lots of ways to make this happen. I think we shouldn't be afraid that something bad. We have to be careful, but I do think we need to move forward with this. And let's not forget, we do have the bonds. And let's not forget, we do have the bonds falling off in a few more years, that picks up almost a million a year. And we also have Cabrillo Properties hanging out there, which is now basically debt-free. That's going to bring fund money to the city at some point, too. So there's a lot of good things on the horizon, I think we need to think big here.
Vice Mayor, would you like to comment now?
Thank you. I'm not, I'll go to the financing. I'm not in favor of a bond and putting that upon our residents. I think that with the situation we're in, and given times do change, I'd like to see Measure J extended for the three years. I like the three years, and I know we have that on our agenda for later this evening, like the three years, because it really does hold people accountable to doing exactly what they say they're doing. And three years is a real time where people's memory is going, so no matter who's sitting here, they say for three years, it's going to, some of the contributions will go to fixed roads, or whatever is decided, and, and the library, it gets done. We've, we've been setting aside a half a million on that. I does, I do think it's doable, and as been mentioned before by others, it is a way to have several people help us with paying for that, because we do have to maintain our roads, and we know we've been working hard, and a lot of that money has been dedicated to roads. But other people use our roads, too, because there's just 13,000 of us here within this community, and we know on any given day, we have 40,000, 50,000 to 100,000 people using our roads. So I'm, I'm in favor, not in favor of the bonds at all, in burdening any parcels or our residents with any more bonding. I'd like to see three-year Measure J with some monies dedicated to the library. And as Councilmember Alafano just said, when, if that passes in November, when it ends in three years, that will be, we will have paid off the Beechwood debt, and that frees up 1.4 million dollars. So that can be contributed to the library. As far as the size and everything, when the sizing was done, that was with everyone's input. That was anything you ever wanted and could imagine, including the kitchen sink. In fact, many sinks that are going to be in that library. I think it's been interesting when the li-, the library professionals went and took a look at this, and they're saying they can do this with a 25,000 square foot library and still maintain the programs that they project. So I'm, I'm looking to the library professionals to tell us what can be used and what's needed. It does save us a sizable amount of money, and also the parking is a great concern, because the one thing that will stop this in this track is parking. And as one of the speakers earlier, who, Jim Marsh, who was on the library task force with me 13 years ago, when we thought, let's have an underground library. To have an underground library with today's dollars is over $7 million.
Underground parking.
Underground parking, thank you. Underground parking is, is $7 million, and that's, you know, a good chunk of the cost of that, that building. So parking concerns me greatly, but if the library professionals are figuring out that they can do this, and this is what our needs are for the future with a 25,000 square foot library, I'm in favor of that.
No, no, I'm, I'm giving you an opportunity, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to add on, having been involved with Boys and Girls Club from, we started it, one of the biggest problems we've had on any project, and there's a gentleman sitting right there that can concur, parking has always been a problem. And when you think about the traffic study that we're going to be going through with the combination of the library, the school, the gym, the skateboard park, we're all in the same area. I'm not sure where we're going to get more parking, I'm hoping that this mitigation comes in low enough, and the amount that we need, we have. Because otherwise, we are going to have to purchase property to make more parking. So my concern is, I don't want to add any more cost to this library if indeed we can do this, if the professionals are saying the 25,000 square feet is okay. I, I don't want us to get in a jam with the parking, so I'm really anxious to see the mitigated parking report. So is there a way that we can wait to see with that report? How long is that report going to be, Alex? Because I hate to make a decision and, you know, they come back and say, oh no, we can do this, and we've said, no, we're going to do this. I would really like to know if there's any way we can determine that prior to.
So Councilmember Patridge, I'll have Dawn from Group Four answer that question.
And unfortunately, I'm not sure there is an answer at hand for that. The gym, Ed was talking to me just before this meeting, and some of the pieces of that puzzle may not be as handy as the information for the library need. The library, the option to always go ahead with your own parking study, just for the library, if you were to do that, it's probably an eight to 12-week study and analysis. We definitely might want to wait till school's back in session, because the parking definitely changes during the school year, and they'll actually go out and do analysis of existing inventory of parking on the streets and adjacent neighborhood. And so at any point, I think even at that, with that in mind, you know, it's realistically end of September even on a standalone, and just depending on the definition of the projects the school's working on, and the skate park, you know, that might take it out a little bit more if you still go ahead with a shared parking analysis.
So it's interesting, because I really believe that we, as elected officials, have to set the example of doing the right things in our city, at least try to do the right things. If we're going to be kind of jeopardizing a project over parking, and then a private individual comes in, whether it's a home or a commercial business, and they can say, well, look at you guys then do it, you know, what kind of an example did we set? So I think that's very important from my perspective on the square footage. 5,000 square feet doesn't sound like a lot, but it is a lot, but it does jeopardize a number of things on the priority level, particularly with parking and funding. So I, I do know that, you know, timing-wise, and I spent six hours this morning at the San Francisco Wholesale Produce Market expansion, eight years we've been looking to design and build and move forward with a new produce terminal there. It's a little bit different situation with dealing with the city of San Francisco than the city of Heflin Bay, I can tell you that, let's hope. But for sure, I think we have to really search our souls on this 5,000 square feet, I really do. And I believe, as Vice Mayor stated, with all respect to everyone else's opinion, that if the professionals really think we can pull this off with the 25,000 square foot, I'd rather, you know, have that burden at hand than one in a bush, really and truly, because I got a feeling that we could move this thing forward as quickly as possible if we do decide to go with the 25,000. And I'd like to ask interim city manager Stuart if your comments, again, just to reiterate this financing part for us, regarding this big number of 5,000 square feet out there that we're really searching our soul over right now.
Right, so I'm going to try and, I'm going to look to Gary to see if I can get my math correct. So thinking about this is, it's about another million and a half more, million, two, million, three more for us to do the 5,000 square feet. Plus whatever it would cost us for parking, let's put that aside. We're looking at borrowing at about $7 million, somewhere about $6.5 million. So if we borrow about another million and a half, it would probably be about another 14% increase in our payments every year. So 14%, if you're looking at the 10-year financing, where, you know, we're right now looking at eight, nine, 8,945,000, so about 9,14% more than that, is probably another one and a half million dollars added, a little under a million, probably a million, two added. Million, two is going to probably cost us, over the 10 years, will be, you know, 120,000 more over the 10 years. We're looking at impacting, see, add that 120,000, we know we're going to need about another 300,000 for the maintenance. So we're beginning to really eat into our ability to do other projects. And that's the, that's the concern from a staff perspective, is if there's other projects that the city council's looking to do in the future, like Smithfield Park, you know, or other ones like that, that we would need to think about how we finance those. The other challenge is when you start going above $10 million in your financing, you have other, you have limit, less options on how you can finance it. Something less than $10 million is bank-qualified. So with a bank-qualified loan, you get about 10 to 20 basis points less. Also, if you're doing less than 10 million, you can do it through a private placement through a bank, a lot easier than you can do it over 10 million, and that would also limit your financing. So you're hitting that point where we can do it, but you're really beginning to limit your options going forward, and you're limiting, you know, you reduce the number of options you have in how you borrow the money. I know that doesn't give you a precise answer, yes or no. We can do it, but it's a much, it's a much tougher solution for you. It's going to cost you more, and as I said, it's going to cost you more in interest probably, because you're not going to be bank-qualified.
Go ahead, Councilman Alafano.
For, for the staff folks here, could we compromise and extend the second floor out, cantilever it, and keep the increased parking area?
So, you know, some hybrid between the 25,000 and the 30,000 square foot option definitely is, is there, and looking at something similar to what you said, by increasing the second floor and retaining the smaller square footage on the first floor, definitely there's that opportunity. But the budget numbers that we ran were based on the program options we had.
Councilman Qualcheck.
So to the interim city manager, you're, thank you for your quick math work there, that's pretty impressive. The, in considering that, I guess for any of these options, let me strike that, I believe none of these options, including the ones you considered, involve any additional cost for other parking that might be necessary, whether it's a, an additional structure or additional properties, is that correct? And it is possible, I'm assuming that it has to be possible, that there may be a need after some analysis, that we might have to provide some additional parking, correct?
Correct, I mean, you know, and I think part of that way we do that, you know, what we've been discussing is using the shared-use parking to solve a lot, to solve the problems for the 30,000 square foot building. If we do the 25,000 square foot building, we may not need, we may not, from a library perspective, have to do the shared parking, but we still may want to do it because it benefits the school district. So I mean, both ways, I think we're going to be interested in doing the shared parking, it's just a matter of who, who needs it more.
Councilman Alafano.
A question for the staff. Library during the day and the evening, when's, when's your max parking?
You know, it varies on what programming we have, we're offering. So we had a program that we actually had to have here, and we had almost 300 people at that event, so that would be a heavy hit on the parking. But it definitely, the 3 o'clock time when Cunha lets out is a, is probably when they're at, when we're busiest. We did a parking study for how many weeks?
Nine weeks.
For nine weeks, and we evaluated parking at 10:00 AM, 12:00 PM, and 3:00 PM. And I think there was no point during that time period where all of our spots were in use. The other heavy hit is the Saturdays, when there are events on the soccer field. And so those are heavy hits to all the parking in the area. So it really, it does fluctuate quite a bit.
Councilman Patridge.
Through the chair. So interim city manager and Alex, I've talked to you about the traffic, changing the configuration of parking on, on Church Street and on Kelly, making some of those diagonal instead of parallel to increase some of the parking spaces. Because right now, the school does not use the parking there because they don't have buses. So that's why that whole street was changed to parallel for buses. In the traffic study, are they going to look at possibly changing those spaces to the diagonal rather than keeping them parallel to increase the parking?
I think in any study, there'd be a holistic approach, and that might be something that we would put forth to them as an idea, and let them see how viable that actually is.
Thank you.
Any further comments? We, we do have to make a decision on next steps here, in my opinion. Everyone has worked so hard, and we need to, as I said, move this forward, the years will fly by, and, yes, I'm sorry, come forward, we'll let you make some comments here. We are kind of time-limited, so do your best here.
Thank you. And thank you for this magnificent project and all of the hard work that's gone into it. My name is Beverly Garrity, I'm a resident in Montero, and I have two grown children. I had concerns about parking based on the magnificent multifunctionality of the new proposed library in either the 25,000 version or the 30,000 square foot version. Do you see in the library's programming for all of this multifunctionality to be operating simultaneously? And if so, not just for one event where 300 people were coming, but if you really were to ramp up the programming to exploit all the multifunctionality, how many people could you potentially see in this new, in this new facility?
Excuse me, would you push the button off, and then they'll answer your question? Thank you.
I think that Annie will probably want to chime in, but at least from my perspective, of course, with new opportunities, we would want to maximize the use of the spaces as much as possible. I think that probably one thing that would limit us is staffing. You know, we currently have a staffing complement that we would be looking at, and that can limit the number of simultaneous programs that go on. But I think the most use of the building would occur with, during the hours that Annie has mentioned, the after-school hours, when we would have kids in the homework center, we would have kids in the teen center, and then of course, all the use in the children's So I think it would kind of resemble what's happening now, only that we would have better spaces to offer the programming in.
Thank you.
So to conclude.
Yes, quickly, please.
Yes, so, so I think that is a question worth looking at, given the new potential, and that's the traffic, not the traffic so much as the parking issue is perhaps larger than we think it is, and I would like to think, see more effort go into solving that problem, because I would like to see this facility come to reality.
Thank you, we had one more speaker.
Push the button, please, Jeanne. Okay, there we go. I was at the current library the day it opened, probably about 1972, and I think, and my kids have grown quite a bit since then, but I can, I remember their excitement and my pleasure of being there that day. So I look forward to a new library. I'm wondering how many people on the coast we actually expect to serve. I heard the number 13,000 used, but I know that's for the city of Heflin Bay, and I usually consider 25,000 to 30,000 as my ballpark figure for the coast side, so I just wanted to get that into the, the books. And also to say that I, I think that the space will be utterly vital for the community life. We have had no place, no meeting places on the coast. no meeting places on the coast for all these years. So finally, we have a place for groups to meet and to be, and I think we'll see it flourishing. And I'm wondering, for instance, about cost. The new senior center, there's a charge, I understand, for using the rooms there. And I'm wondering if there would be a charge at the library for organizations. Thank you.
Thank you. Just briefly, staff, I think, Alex, we have the square miles of the library service. I don't have it with me. And also, population-wise, I think we have it here. So we're talking 270 square miles of individuals that come through, and then we have at least 29,000, probably 30,000 coside residents gross out there. And so we'll go there. Suzie, quick word, and then we do have to conclude, because we do have a scheduled council meeting soon.
It'll be real fast. No one has mentioned the fact that the community room, which would be shortened if it went to the 25,000, is probably available for renting out, and it could offset your maintenance dollars in years to come by renting it after hours to private groups. So that wasn't brought up today, and I just wondered if it had been thought about. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
That was one of the things we had talked about. For corporations, often want to use big spaces, so that would be-- it would be our hope that organizations that are nonprofits would be able to use the rooms as they need to, from Boy Scouts to Friends of the Library. So for nonprofits, we wouldn't be charging. It's part of the community. But if businesses and corporations want it, sure, they can help.
Well, I think we have to bring library size to a conclusion here. And also, then, once we get library size, then we have to work on financing options. So I would ask direction of the council to give to all what preferable size, and we'll probably have to take a vote on it. So go ahead and make your comments on size.
Through the chair. I definitely like the idea of keeping the community room the size it's planned. I think it would be a huge advantage to us to have that kind of facility upstairs. But I agree with the comments about parking. I am very concerned about not having enough parking and then even taking more away. So I think if we can design the larger upstairs, keep the full parking-- and I think it was, what, 53 spaces with the larger facility-- and keep the expanded upstairs, but have to shrink the downstairs, I think that would be an acceptable solution to my mind.
Through the chair. I think it's the square footage that determines the parking, so I'm not sure-- it will help some, but I think we would still need probably maybe 75 instead of 70. By our ordinance, all the parking is by square footage. But I do like that idea, so.
Vice Mayor.
Well, to try to put it in a motion, I think what I'm hearing is that the council is interested in an expanded second story. We don't know exactly what that square footage is. We're not looking to make the building come out to 30,000 square feet due to the parking. So in terms of a motion, and staff can help me out, the council-- do we have to-- what we're recommending, a direction. So we're asking, what would it look like to expand the second story to square footage? And keeping the lower at what your sizing is 25,000 square feet, I think the interest is expanding that community room upstairs is one of the elements that has been brought forward. And also, that the council is not interested in any of the general obligation bonds, but is looking to extend Measure J.
Everyone understand that at the council here? Direction we're giving-- it's strictly just direction, there's no vote. This is a study session. Is that correct, legal team? And staff? And advisors? So I think we-- are we in agreement with the vice mayor's-- excuse me-- comments? I am, yeah.
I am.
Okay. So, public, I hope you understand, we are really trying hard. I think the bottom line is, we do not want to jeopardize the momentum we have. Very simple. We're with you. We're going to stay with you. We just got to figure out-- staff is talking a lot over there, so I don't know. Hopefully, you're in agreement with what we're giving you, direction, or do you want some clearer directions?
No, I understand that we're looking for to have the second floor expanded over the parking, and that you would want to find financing through a lease revenue source.
I think that's correct, and--
And we'll figure out what the cost--
Councilman Alafano.
Quick question for staff. If, as Naomi mentioned, you could take and change some of the parking areas to angled parking from parallel, would that be considered as increased parking for the project?
I mean, I think what we'd have to do is go through the environmental process and do the traffic and parking analysis to figure out exactly how it's going to all fit together. So what we would do is, we'd bring that back to you at the point in time that we're finished with that. I'm looking across to--
Alex.
Just, I think the concept is very clear. The detailed direction, I think, may be challenging to execute to that level. So I think if the direction is to look at keeping the capacity in the program room of the larger option, and then look at, you know, coming up with the strategy that best positions the parking onsite to meet that demand without giving us specific directions to do over-existing parking. That level of detail, we're just grappling with right now, as we're trying to see if we could actually execute that in the five minutes you've given us. So just if it's a little bit more general, I think it would be easier to come back with in light of the general thoughts that you have.
Councilwoman Qualcheck, then we'll need to conclude.
Thank you. And I think that's-- so I agree with that, because I believe Councilmember Alafano is a horrible architect, although that was a great idea. So I think our architecture should have the latitude to go with our concept, which is to optimize the second floor in terms of the community space and other ways to make the best use of that space. If we can optimize that, that makes the most sense. And I-- at the end of the day, I guess my final comment is, we have great momentum. We can't stop. We have to keep moving, and let's not let any hurdles get in our way. And if there's a hurdle in our way, let's be flexible enough to adapt to keep our momentum. And I think what we're trying to illustrate here is that we're trying to be flexible and just keep our momentum and get this done for our city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alex, I'll let you conclude here, please.
Just real quick, I wanted clarity on the general fund lease. Is it the 10-year option that you guys are deciding to go with?
I think that's what the Interim City Manager was suggesting to us. And so we're going to go with that. So that's our next steps, and we will kind of hope to get a report back from you as soon as possible. I know it's difficult right now. We have a busy August agenda coming, but we got to keep this momentum, as Councilman Qualcheck said, moving forward. So that's the direction we have, this direction we're going to go with. Thank all of you for your support. We're not going to give up on anything here. And we never give up, as Councilman Patrick has said with the last 40 years on the council. But anyway, thank all of you. We're going to have to have a quick reshuffling of the tables here. So our meeting will probably start about 7:15 at the latest. So thank you very much.